March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Ms. Chriselius. Hello, good morning. We had a late night last night at Brink Mission.
How late did it go? I left at ten.
Oh, well, eleven-thirty.
Oh, wow. That's, at least it's not one-thirty like the city. Yeah, yeah.
Three-thirty, three-thirty.
Oh, three-thirty, yeah, goodness.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so tell us about the ordinance twenty-one dash zero eight.
Sure, I have just a couple of slides because the image, the images do help. Is that okay if I share screen?
Please.
Okay.
I hope desk will make that happen. Ms. Dayton, thank you.
So this was a rezon request that received a positive recommendation from the county commissioners. So this is how the parcels currently show up. Only one parcel is being partially rezoned. There are three parcels total. What makes it a little confusing is that, so we're looking at the lot one, the sixty-plus acres. And that has the majority area on the north side of North Bremitz Creek Road. And a little bit, a few acres on, also on the south side. So the property is currently zoned ag or r. And then the two small parcels that we see, lots two and lot three, those parcels are zoned estate residential. So back in October of last year, they went ahead and started a sliding scale subdivision process. And the surveyor discovered that this small lot three outline that we see here is not represented correctly. The lots, the two small lots are actually directly adjacent and that the parcel layer is incorrect and the zoning layer is incorrect. So this is the current configuration, which means that lot one would have difficulty, would not be able to subdivide because it would be mixed zoning. That wouldn't meet standards. So the goal here is for lot one. So it's a little bit more consistent with this actual zoning standard. So that lot one is all ag or r because it meets all those design standards and is undeveloped and vacant. And that two small lots in their correct locations are correctly zoned estate residential. What, how it came this way, I, I have not been able to explain. But even our nineteen-ninety-seven zoning map shows the two small parcels being zoned ER and being separate from each other despite the legal descriptions showing that the parcels actually have adjoining boundary, so. So fairly simple, I've called it a corrective action, but I can't find how it, you know, how it came to be. If approved, this, this rezon will, this petitioner will start back up the sliding scale subdivision process.
All right, I'll see if there are any comments or questions from Commissioner Jones.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Chriselius. We appreciate you being here. And I'm assuming this is going to be on our agenda next week?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, and we also have a report we're going to hear. Maybe we should start with Ms. Purdy to introduce it and then we can talk to the presenters.
Good morning.
Sorry, interrupting your lunch.
I know, I have to snag this real fast. Yes, this group that we have here is part of the, I want to get it right, Environmental Resilience Institute. And they did a project that involved meeting with a number of our county departments, department heads, people who are in the field and doing things that affect our environment. So we all met and we did it through Zoom. This is also during the pandemic, which made it all very interesting for everyone. And we finally got all the, the information submitted and they are here today to, to share the results with you. And we have Andrea Webster, Zach Richardson. We also have Nolan Hendon and Peter Iverson. So I don't know who all wants to present or speak, but I'm gonna, it looks like Andrea does.
Yeah, thanks, Angie. So you'll hear from both Zach and me today. So my name's Andrea Webster. I'm the implementation manager at IU's Environmental Resilience Institute, which is based in Bloomington. And our house is on the corner of Athan Park. We're not there much these days, but hopefully we'll be one day again. So as Angie mentioned, we worked with Monroe County to complete the Hoosier Resilience Index readiness assessment. And Zach, do you want to share your, the PowerPoint slides?
Yes, I can do that.
Great, okay. And actually, well, once you're done with that, I'll have you introduce yourself to.
Okay, is that working?
Yep, I can see it.
Okay. It's not in a press interview that happens to me about half the time.
Nope, looks good, looks good. So, so the Hoosier Resilience Index readiness assessment is essentially a survey that local governments in Indiana can use to help understand how prepared they are for the impacts of climate change. And so there are about, I guess Monroe County is the fifteenth local government in Indiana to complete this assessment. Bloomington has completed it, Richmond, Goshen, Evans, not Evansville, there's a whole bunch, Dyer, Indiana, Spencer. So there's a whole bunch on the list, so we're really happy to add Monroe County. So what we wanted to do today was just review the results of that assessment. And so, so that's what we'll do. And we'd love your sort of impact, input and comments as we work through it. So we can definitely keep the whole working session going. We're certainly open to interruptions throughout the presentation. And you'll hear from both Zach and I. And depending on who's talking, maybe the other person can watch the chat too and to help moderate questions. So, all right, so next slide. Yes. All right, so so we wanted to first kind of give you a little overview of how climate change is going to impact Monroe County. So this is something that you, oh, I say, okay, so that question is not for me. So the, so with the Hoosier Resilience Index, there's kind of two parts. In the first part, you can look and see what the climate vulnerability is for that, for your hometown. And then part two is the readiness assessment. So we want to kind of give you a sense of how climate change is going to impact Monroe County first. So for, on this slide, we want to talk about how climate change is going to impact the most vulnerable in your community first and hardest. And that's what we're seeing across the state of Indiana and we're seeing all around the country. So if you have, so, so specifically low income is going to impact your, I'm sorry, climate change is going to impact your low income and minority populations first and then, and hardest. And then everyone else will probably come second. And so some examples of this are, you know, so for example, if, if, if there's a flood and there are, so what typically happens is that the cheaper housing is closer to the flood plain. That's common in many communities. And so, and even if you are required to get flood insurance to be in a home, if you are a, if you are renting that property instead of owning it, then it's going to be harder for you to deal with, the, the renter itself does not have to have flood insurance. And so that's going to present problems. And so, you know, there's, so that's one, I guess, sort of simple example, but there's plenty more. But I just want to make sure to raise the issue that as we're thinking about how to prepare for climate change, we want to think about those that are most vulnerable first. So in Monroe County specifically, there are six census tracts that are in the top twenty-five percent of the most vulnerable census tracts in the state of Indiana for socioeconomic vulnerability. And so when I say socioeconomic vulnerability, I'm talking about low-income populations and all that. Let me just make sure I say all this correctly here. Yeah, so folks that might be unemployed and maybe do not have a high school diploma. Oh, in Monroe County, you have five census tracts that are in the top twenty-five percent of the most vulnerable census tracts in Indiana for minority status and language. So that means that Monroe County has a high proportion of individuals that speak English less than well and are considered minorities from the US Census language. I know that term minority is not quite appropriate for, but that's the way the US Census still defines it. Right, next slide. And I think from here, I'm going to pass it over to Zach to, to review the, how climate change is going to impact Monroe County. And go ahead and introduce yourself to Zach, I know you haven't had a chance to do that.
Sure, so yeah, a pleasure to be with you all. I'm Zach Richardson and I'm the resilience analyst for the Environmental Resilience Institute. And that just means that I focus primarily on the Hoosier Resilience Index. I do some data management on the backend and then things like this for community engagement. So the, the main impacts of climate change that the state of Indiana is going to see are increases in extreme heat and extreme precipitation. So to, to start out, you know, this is some information on what the, the past has looked like. I want to say nineteen-seventy-five to two thousand. The average number of days per year above ninety degrees was twenty-six. And you can see, these are projections from the Indiana Climate Change Impacts Assessment, which is a report put out by Purdue University aggregating information from scientists all across the state of Indiana. So these are the projected numbers for the number of extreme heat days that we might see in the ballpark of twenty-fifty. So you can see almost a tripling in the number of days over ninety degrees and the number of nights that exceed sixty-eight degrees. And that's really important because when your body doesn't have a chance to cool down from a high heat day at night, especially multiple days in a row, that's when you see a lot more emergency room visits for heat-related illnesses. And then, of course, the other impact is extreme precipitation. So Monroe County is already getting on average eight, around eight inches more rain and snow over the course of a year compared to, let's see, it says eighteen-ninety-five to two thousand and nineteen. And then you can see that that increase is likely to continue as time goes on. So these numbers are per decade, the last slide was per year. But we define an extreme precipitation event to be a twenty-four hour period where more than two inches of precipitation falls. So on average, per decade, there have been nineteen of those. And around the twenty-fifties, it's projected to be twenty-two or twenty-three. And that doesn't seem like a huge increase, but there's more nuance sort of hidden in those numbers. That precipitation is likely to be more concentrated in the winter and spring and less in the fall. So you'll have much wetter winters and springs and drier summers and falls. And the other thing is that it doesn't describe how large those events are going to be. So an extreme precipitation event is just an event that has more than two inches of rainfall, but doesn't say how much bigger. So what we're likely to see is increasingly larger precipitation events that are increasingly concentrated in winter and spring, which of course, you know, that leads us to concerns about flooding, especially flooding in developed areas. So Monroe County has about twenty-eight thousand acres in the flood plain. And of that, about twenty-one percent is developed. And it's not a problem if wetlands flood, that's what they're, they're meant to do. They are sort of a natural sponge. But you can see in the picture, that's Elkhart back in twenty-eighteen when developed areas flood, especially with impervious surfaces, that can cause a lot of, a lot of damage to property and people's well-being. So I think now we're going to move into the results of the readiness assessment. Yes. So I, I want to say that the, the assessment was begun last summer or last fall with a team of students at IU that we were working with. And then that class, that project concluded and we've, we've got the, the results put together here. So the readiness is a readiness assessment scores out of ten how prepared Monroe County is for extreme heat, extreme precipitation and land use in the flood plain. So this bolded row shows the score out of ten. And the way that the assessment is broken down is by these eight worksheets. So you can see built environment, economic development and so on. And these are designed to be broken out individually and given to staff in those departments in the local government. Oops. And so looking at the results in, in this way, it can help show some of the detail that might be missing from just looking at the overall scores. For example, you can see your overall score for extreme heat is six-point-one-six. But built environment and emergency management are both worksheets, areas of government that are doing really well, are, are really quite prepared for extreme heat, while public health and safety and planning and land use are two areas where there might be some room to improve preparedness for extreme heat. Andrea, I saw you unmuted. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to give you guys a sense of how you're comparing to other county governments. So we've had a few other county governments complete the assessment and, and your scores are dramatically higher. Well, you know, like within the range of being dramatically higher. So I think the average scores that we're seeing from the, the other counties are in the four point. So for, for extreme heat readiness, we're seeing four-point-four-seven as an average. For extreme precipitation readiness, we're seeing a five. And then for flood plain management, we're seeing a four-point-three. So, so Monroe County's scores were much higher. And we did notice that as we were scanning through, you guys have a lot more fours and fives. And so, and what that means is that, so each question, how we presented is that there, we, we present an action that you could complete to make your community more prepared for climate change. And we understand that completing that action may not be a yes or no question. It may be on a sliding scale. And so one typically means you haven't done that action at all. And a five typically means that you have done that action very well and very comprehensively. And so mostly we see communities clicking the twos and threes throughout the assessment. But with Monroe County, we saw you on a lot of threes and fours and, and quite a few fives as well, which really brought your scores up. All right, so I guess now we can.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Zach. I'll let you keep going and then I can fill in afterwards.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I, Zoom is not wanting to let me unmute myself. So this is just another way to look at the information. So you can see on the left side, we've got the eight worksheets. And within each worksheet, the actions are collected into these impacts. So these are the likely impacts of climate change. And you can see that some impacts might not apply. For example, river and surface flooding in developed areas, that does not really apply to extreme heat. But you can look at these impacts and say, okay, here is a specific impact from climate change. And here is how prepared Monroe County is for that impact with regard to extreme heat, extreme precipitation or land use in the flood plain. So this just gives a little more granularity to what we were looking at on the, on the last slide. So I know I mentioned that, for example, public health and safety is one area where there might be some room for improvement. And you can see that the impacts driving that are illnesses related to outdoor air pollution and heat-related illnesses. But on the other hand, within that public health and safety worksheet, we can see that you're doing really well, scoring a seven for illnesses from disease-carrying vectors. So this sort of table can show what areas you may want to really target and which areas you're doing really well in. Like for example, five, the communication systems. I don't think there's really any, any room for improvement there. You're doing, doing very, very well.
Yeah, I think, so now is probably a good time for us to transition into talking more about the kind of, the contextual, specific actions that we saw that were, you guys are doing really well in and areas where you could improve. And so as we're reviewing your answers, I guess we'll start with areas where we feel like Monroe County is doing relatively well, especially compared to other governments across the state. Zach, do you want to go back one slide?
Sure.
All right, so, so you can see here that some of your highest scores are in emergency management. So you've got a lot of eight-point-fours, eight-point-fives. And so what this means, what we noticed within here is that your communication systems seem to be very robust and that you have identified and addressed weaknesses that, especially the weaknesses that might occur as a result of the impact of climate change. And you address those. And you also distribute a local, state and federal contacts list to staff across the county government to make sure that everybody knows who to call when something happens. And I also noticed in seven, impact seven, which is increased impact on residents during and after flood and heat events. So specifically for seven B, you also marked a five, which is a top. And that's identify and prepare for hazardous conditions that could occur from higher temperatures and floods. So, so Monroe County marks that you have a list of all possible hazardous events and you adequately and equitably protected areas and residents that would be affected. And so you feel like that, that you're doing a good job in preparing your community in your areas and your people for the impacts of climate change. You guys have a drought response plan, which is great because as Zach mentioned, you know, in certain parts of the year, we're getting a lot more rain, but in other parts, we're going to see less. And so it's always good to have a drought response plan as well. I also noticed that from a sort of diversity, equity, inclusion aspect so that you had some high marks and some of those credits within our assessment. So specifically for D, which is, the action is to establish a protocol for providing assistance to residents that may face financial strain caused by climate hazards. So this is not one that we have seen, I'll have to go back and check, but I don't know that we've seen anybody across the state mark a five on this. So I was really happy to see that Monroe County has marked a five. And so what this means is that you have a plan to financially assist vulnerable residents after an event. So if there are vulnerable residents, low-income, people of color, and they just don't have the capacity to respond to that event, then Monroe County has in its budget funding that can distribute to those, those residents and those communities to help them bounce back to where they were before or even better from where they were before. And likewise, I saw that for the, for seven C, which is to enhance community networks and connections for vulnerable communities, you marked a four, which is also very, fairly high. And so you have a plan in place to enhance networking to help vulnerable residents get to the resources they need, especially during and after hazardous events. So that was really good to see. In addition to that, I saw that, you know, Monroe County really cares about its wetlands and its green spaces. It does a really great job with habitat protection. Of course, there's always areas to improve. And so that's why we have, you know, the one through five scale. But, but there were a lot of fours and fives in that area of natural resources as well. And it seems like you guys are starting to think about your tree canopy too, which is good because that's a very strong part of being a resilient community, all the benefits that trees can offer. And then finally, I saw that you've integrated stormwater retention into your zoning codes for credit fifteen C, that you had marked a five for that. So, so that was really nice to see. Zach, do you want to add anything to the list of things that Monroe County is doing really well?
Yeah, I think it, it ties in with the tree, tree canopy cover. And the word, the word cover is what set me off the pervious or impervious cover limits or it's incentivizing pervious cover. That was something that I saw in, it was impact fifteen, so things planning and, planning and land use. That's a really, a really important one, especially with considerations for surface flooding. And you think you marked a four for that, which is really good to see. You're still muted, Andrea.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions or should we move into the areas we saw where there could be some improvement? Okay, we will keep going. All right, so in terms where Monroe County could improve its preparedness for the impacts of climate change, the lowest scores we saw were in public health and safety and then a lot in planning and land use. So you can see in public health and safety, under extreme heat, there's a three-point-five-six. And I believe that was your lowest score among all the categories. So specifically what we saw there is, so there's a category there where, you know, for, as an impact, that we're going to see increased warm season temperatures, specifically in developed areas. And so, I'm sorry, I was just hitting the wrong one. Here we go, so I'm actually looking at impact twenty-one, so increased likelihood of heat-related illnesses. So, so some actions here are educate about heat-related illness and prevention, conduct a heat vulnerability assessment and develop a heat management plan, and then implement programs or activities that reduce heat impacts in the built environment. So temperatures are increasing. And so this is really common that we see across the state of Indiana is that temperatures are increasing over time. We're seeing more hot days and more hot evenings, Zach has mentioned before. But there's not a lot of work going on across the state really to prepare our residents for increasing temperatures. So if you're thinking about things you could do next, I would highly encourage you to look at those types of actions. And then in the planning and land use section, section eighteen, I noticed was, had a lot of low scores. So I think just generally understanding how climate change is going to impact your community and take steps to prepare is always a good place to start. And so the Hoosier Resilience Index readiness assessment and, and the index overall has a lot of that information. And of course, conducting a greenhouse gas inventory to help reduce emissions overall so you can track and measure and reduce is a good next step. And then integrating funding for readiness actions into the local government's financial planning. So this one in particular is, is incredibly important. So, you know, up until this point, and as, as far as we know in the future, local governments are really expected to be the responding agencies across all levels of government for climate change, especially in Indiana. And so it's really unfortunate that the financial impact of that is falling on local governments when local governments don't have those funds. But I think it's important to have at least some funding set aside for this, anything that you can manage. Because residents are closest to you. And so they're going to turn to their city governments and town governments and to their county governments to try to figure out what to do when we're impacted by climate change. And you're closest to those impacts too. So you're you're feeling those temperatures. And so it's really important when when budgeting to really think about what funding can be set aside for these things. I'm hopeful with the incoming administration, presidential administration's focus on climate change, that there will eventually be funding set aside for local governments to do this work. That remains to be seen. We're still early on in that administration, so I'm very hopeful that will be the case. But in the meantime, we really need to think about how we can fund that, those things locally. I think I will stop it there. Zach, do you have anything you want to add in terms of areas you saw for improvement?
Yeah, I think a couple of things. One thing I noticed with that that impact eighteen is there is there's an opportunity, especially with regard to energy efficiency. Sometimes there are ordinances or policies that might disincentivize energy efficiency, not deliberately. But it can be worthwhile to sort of review the the code and the ordinances to make sure that there aren't any of those policy barriers to energy efficiency. And removing those can be a great step towards improving that score eighteen. And then I did, I did want to mention some stuff in the public health and safety worksheet. I think it's it's interesting to look at because the scores for public health and safety with regard to precipitation and flooding are higher. And that's because the the two impacts, outdoor air pollution and heat-related illness that scored lower don't apply to precipitation and floodplain land use. So that that impact nineteen and twenty one, those just apply to extreme heat and public health. And, you know, I was I was looking at what actions can be taken within those impacts. And for for impact nineteen, I think there's an opportunity to plan for days that have high outdoor air pollution and then distribute materials to the community on how they can individually prepare themselves to cope with those. I think it's things like not working, not working outside, not doing things like mowing the lawn or running a leaf blower, those add to that outdoor air pollution. So those are options for educating the public on how they can cope with outdoor air pollution. And the same thing with heat-related illnesses, making sure that the public knows what measures they can take to protect themselves from heat-related illness. And the one other action item in impact twenty one was conducting a heat assessment. So it is it's possible to survey the area and see what parts of the county are most likely to encounter high heat. So I think especially so especially things like urban heat islands, where you have a lot of hot surfaces that can exacerbate extreme heat.
Yep, Peter, this is our last our last slides and talking points, but I do want to mention that we are working on a report that really reviews this stuff in detail. I know we've gone over it at a very high level today, but we'll send that report probably in the next few weeks with some details of this. So it's all written down for you.
Yeah, that would be really helpful to have, especially as we're working on our county development ordinance right now. So I think it would be helpful to have that information. One, one point of clarification quickly, if you would. Some of these departments are countywide, some of them are 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 just the county outside of the city or town. So, for example, stormwater. How did you account for that? And is that clear in the report?
Yeah, so in our assessment, there is an option for, like, if 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 there's a question that does not apply to the county because it's more of a city thing, there's an option for the county to say this does not apply, and then that does not get factored into the score.
We also ask when there are those sort of like overlapping jurisdictions that if it's a city, that they only respond with their jurisdiction. And then if it's a county, that they respond with the county excluding whatever the city manages, that they're not overseeing.
Right, okay. Let's see if my colleagues have questions.
Not at this time. I I'm looking forward to looking this over a bit more and and being able to discuss it a bit. I would like to thank Mr. Iverson, who kind of got us back on track with this, which I think is very useful having it. And so thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome. And Commissioner Jones, your leadership is greatly appreciated on the Environmental Commission as well. We couldn't have finished this without your help either. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, what a great team. Um, and and I I also want to extend thanks to the entire Environmental Commission, but also our departments who completed this information and took the time to do it actively and to be thorough. Anything from you, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I did want to know if different sections were answered by different departments, because the Health Department may be rating themselves much lower than Stormwater Department is rating themselves. So I think knowing that is important also.
Yeah, so how this is typically set up is that, you know, built environment is answered by one department, and then emergency management is answered by another department. So you are going to have that variation. And so this that, you know, reiterates the point that this really is meant to be a self-assessment. And so, you know, as we provide this results, these the results report back to you, you can share that back with the individual departments so they can see where there is improvement are specifically in their day-to-day work.
Great. Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing the report. And hopefully, we can either send questions to you or have you come back and answer questions if we have them. That would be really useful for us, especially if we try to get better. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thanks for the opportunity. We're happy to help whoever we can be of assistance.
Right, thanks for being here. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. I know we have Ms. Rice has an agenda item for us, I believe. Let's see. Could you, could T S D, could you bring Ms. Rice over if she's on? Maybe she's not.
There she is.
I am.
Oh, there you are. Hello.
Here, I just, I didn't, I couldn't unmute myself. And my laptop is on, so you won't get to see my face. But if I can share my screen, I will share the document that I'll be reviewing with you. So this is a very simple MOU between Monroe County and Indiana University. It is based on a similar arrangement that was done in Floyd County for the distribution of the COVID vaccine. So this I did send to you, this has been a pretty quick turnaround. I started working on this with the Indiana University attorneys this week. Last week I was out of the office. But we had a phone call with a couple of attorneys from IU and with Penny. And Penny and Kathy Hewitt have looked over this agreement. It essentially provides that Assembly Hall is going to be a distribution site for the vaccine. In Floyd County, Floyd County was really more in charge of the distribution than IU. Here in Bloomington, IU is going to take the lead on the distribution. So this MOU sort of has the whereas of why we're doing this. It has here, you'll see IU agrees to do the following items, and it lists A through K. And we're agreeing to do these items in two, exercising reasonable care, providing a point of contact, helping them with traffic control, assuring any pre-event and post-event cleanup is taken care of, being, you know, honoring confidentiality, holding them harmless. I can tell you that the more active role for the distribution, again, is going to be Indiana University. But Penny and Kathy are working with staff at IU, the sort of non-lawyer staff, and looking at a checklist to see who's going to do what. And let's see, I'm going to share here. They they have all the items that you might possibly need for a distribution, and they're checking off who's going to do what. So this is set to open on Monday. We'd like to have your approval to move forward on this. We're excited about the opportunity to have one more place to distribute the vaccine, especially now that it's been opened up for people, you know, ages sixteen and older. And so I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm afraid I'm not as knowledgeable about the actual day-to-day operation as Penny is, but she is the woman of the year, and she is
She's being honored at this moment, as she should be. So I know that we've been on the calls with IU for over the last year. And so we're pretty familiar with this pod, point of distribution, opening up at IU, and they have the capacity to add a lot more vaccines per day than than we have with Monroe County Health Department and the Convention Center, although Convention Center, again, many thanks to them, they've been great. Is there a role here for the Medical Reserve Corps?
Yes. Yeah, there is. And they talked about that, and they talked about how they're sort of approved and, you know, how they're sort of checked out to make sure they're ready to go during our phone call. And let me share with you that checklist, because I think there's a little something on the checklist about that.
Yeah, because I think it in the contract, and I ran a word search on it and did guess it. I thought, again, I missed it.
If you look, this is a draft checklist of sort of looking at the left-hand column, like everything they might possibly need for, you know, running one of these sites. And then on the on the right hand, the two columns, which party is going to be responsible, IU Bloomington or County Health Department. We did not include this this detailed checklist in the agreement, didn't think it was necessary. This is more of a working document. But Penny completed this and and has been working with IU. There might be some things that we're both doing, but I believe here scheduling and personnel, you can see here, assisting connecting our volunteers and our staff. And they definitely talked about, you know, getting all of those volunteers and getting as many people working at this as possible.
It's not mentioned at all in this contract. I just can't find, I just can't find it.
Let me see, there is the manage all registration online. Let's look.
I'm not seeing the word volunteer, medical reserve, M R C. I read through it, and then I'm just doing word searches just to see if I missed it.
Yeah, I know it was definitely a point of our conversation with them. This paragraph, IU shall determine the number of administrative healthcare personnel required.
Right.
And I think that the volunteers are considered within the category of the people who are personnel. Because I know that they talked about that, I can tell you that one of the questions we had, let me see if I can find it. I can share this with you.
Is this checklist something that can be added to the contract as an addendum?
We talked about that. We talked about adding it as an addendum, but didn't think that it was necessary, legally necessary. It's definitely something that, you know, that they've, you know, that they're working on together, but didn't think it needed to be. I talked with Josh Spendler and Marc Marsha Gonzalez, who are the two attorneys at IU. And we toyed with the idea of attaching it as exhibit, but decided not to. Certainly, that's something, if you felt strongly that it needed to be, I'm sure, you know, I could change this and add it, and it wouldn't be a big deal. Looking for the conversation that we were talking about volunteers.
Yeah, it's, item J just said personnel.
Yeah, and I think during the conversation, stop my share real quick. Find this email and share this. We were, when we were talking about volunteers. Re-share my screen. So here is Penny and I were talking about, I had sent her an email saying, hey, how are the volunteers checked out? And then I forwarded this to the university. But here's the conversation. And Penny talked with IU about this yesterday, that LaShana Wooten checks out our volunteers, and it says they have to register in INSERV. They indicate their title licensure on the application. She checks the license verification with her name and license. Sure, the license is active for all volunteers, including vaccinators. I checked my case. So I think the language personnel, the parties are intending that language personnel to include these volunteers. And they mentioned as well that there were other, going to be other licensed doctors participating and, you know, other nurses participating in this process. So I think their intention is that personnel language is inclusive.
It doesn't seem like they're going to be using the M R C, honestly, just based on this, but
you know, I know.
I don't know that that's important to know.
Yeah, well, I believe they did talk about that. Penny, and again, if Penny were here, she could give you a definite answer. I don't know if Kathy Hewitt is on, I don't see her necessarily as an intended. No, I don't see her. I can certainly.
I just don't know if it's important that that's delineated or not. I have no idea. I don't know if IU is just planning on providing their own volunteers through INSERV and going through that process, or if it means that M R C folks can be used. I know we just got another schedule for volunteering. And I believe all of this is at the Convention Center still, because it's finishing out dose number two on Moderna. I I can't tell what's going on, and I don't know if it's important to know that. So let's see if Commissioner Jones or Commissioner Giffens have any questions.
No questions. I just, IU has really been an amazing partner throughout all of this pandemic. And we really appreciate all that they've done for the community.
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, we would not be in the position we're in if we had not had such great cooperation and and really forward-thinking on the part of IU. But on page two, and I have not gone into this in depth either. It says IU shall not be required to, nor shall be liable for any failure to acquire an emergency generator for the continuity of services. But I didn't see anything about whether or not the county is supposed to provide that.
We are not providing, yeah, we were not, they're going to be in charge of of the facility, but I'm sure that they have have those kinds of details covered. I think it's just, again, this was based on an example that they gave, that they had, that they had worked on in Floyd County. But I can tell you that it's their facility, and and they're going to be sort of in charge of any, you know, emergency issues.
Well, I mean, if if the vaccine, though, requires, you know, the specialized chilling, cooling, whatever you want to call it, it might be necessary that an emergency generator is there. I don't know. This is, again, a question for Penny Cottle or Kathy Hewitt.
Yeah, and and I think that Yeah, and, and I think that, again, let me look at this checklist. If you, if you notice, and I think that's also, if they, they have space for their freezers, including plan to monitor storage unit temps. I think they have a plan for that. Whether or not they are required to have a generator or not, I know that they have plans to make sure that they're keeping the vaccine cool. And so again, just because the agreement says they're not required to do it, doesn't mean that they actually won't or won't have that available.
Right. And I'm thinking that the state has whatever requirements for a pod, right? That they're going to have to deal with the state, the health, state health department on, and this might be one of them.
If you notice that they do say that, you know, that they have freezers and refrigerators. And I think that key there is, you know, it says that they're not liable for any failure to acquire an emergency generator. You know, I think that has to do more with liability than the fact that they're not. I mean, they are going to, going to definitely be keeping the vaccine cold and plans to preserve it.
And I would assume the hospital is a, is a standby and I'm sure that there are contingency plans.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good question though. So I guess, I guess the question, and Commissioner Jones is absolutely right, that the IU's been a great partner throughout this whole pandemic in terms of working with the Health Department on, on, on keeping students, staff and faculty safe, you know, throughout this whole pandemic. But also, I mean, they, they contributed to the testing site because they recognized that even though they're doing their own mitigation testing, that their faculty, staff and students were using the county's site. And they recognized that and contributed to that. So they, they've been in so many ways, an amazing partner, which is great. So what is the, I guess I'm trying to figure out the timeline as well. It sounds like this is something you want us to approve today and ratify next week. Is there urgency here?
Yeah, I would like you to approve it. The clinic is, you know, they got notice and there did a pretty quick turnaround, so they're actually going to open on Monday. And, and we'd like to have your approval to move forward. Obviously, the Board of Health, I have a signature for the Board of Health, and they're not meeting until April 6th. We'll get our necessary approvals. However, this is one time when Indiana University's bureaucratic process is a lot quicker than ours. They can get it signed this week and don't have to go through the public process that we're going through. So we talked about that, I talked about that with the two attorneys. And, and if we could get your approval to move forward on Monday, that would be great. I can get any follow-up questions answered to you next week. And then we're going to have the Board of Health approve this on the 6th.
Is everybody okay with that?
Oh, I'm more than okay with it. Yeah.
Okay. I just feel like even if we do have questions, that this is so urgent and important. I know that, I think we all know that Ms. Rice and her legal staff are so cautious and careful and thorough that they're going to take care of any of these little loose threads that are still hanging out there. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding for prophylaxis during public health emergency between the Monroe County Health Department and Indiana University.
Start again.
All right, we have a motion in a second. So I don't see any public comment. Should have done the motion before the public comment, but we're still good. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the MOU?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
I will make sure that I follow up with Penny and Kathy and we have answers to your questions when we bring this back next week.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Rice. I know that's, you've been working really hard on this, so thank you for that. Let's see if there's any other departments that have anything they want to bring before us. Okay, it doesn't look like it. All right. Excellent. So with that, unless there's anything else from my colleagues. Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Be well.